I call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. We have moment of silence and pledge with Dr. Kalanen.
Tonight, the pledge or the moment of-
Moment of silence and then the pledge.
Okay. I just wanted to dedicate this moment of silence to the suffering of the people in Gaza and in Israel, both. And I didn't want to really focus on the politics. I was thinking more in terms of the human element of this terrible tragedy. It would have been bad enough, I think, if this was a natural disaster, a flood or an earthquake. But what makes this particular tragedy so horrible, so obscene, is the infliction of so much pain on so many people. It's an example of humanity against humanity. And it just brings to mind the words of the poet who said, "Any man's death diminishes me, for I am involved in mankind, and therefore never send to know for whom the bell tolls; it tolls for thee." The pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, you can either go out the back doors at the back of the chambers and out to the parking lot, or you can go out these double doors here, take a left down the next set of double doors, down the stairs, and out to the parking lot. Kathy, can I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Kalanen?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Kober?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay. Item number six, board guests. Item A, First LEGO League Students. I'm super stoked about this one. Go ahead, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley. Tonight, we welcome our First LEGO League students. I won't ruin any of the surprise introductions. So I will just introduce Ms. Elena Beebe. That's our esteemed coordinator for the district, and I will allow her to do the introductions.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. So tonight, we brought with us some of the advisors and the students from Whitney and from Crandall. We have Mr. Barrett, Ms. Ziba, and Ms. Muggleton. And then we have Kayvon, who is from Whitney, Sophia from Crandall, and June from Crandall. So on December 2nd, we had a First LEGO League showcase at JFK. So we have a quick video, if you guys want to watch this, kind of see what we did that day. So we have about 36 students that participated this fall in the clubs with their advisors. So we brought them here today. First LEGO League in 5th grade is more of a showcase. The kids kind of just get a little bit of a taste of the program. And then when they move to JFK, it's still First LEGO League, but they go to a competition where they get to compete against other teams. And then they move on, 7th and 8th grade with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Baling. They run the First Tech Challenge. And then in the high school, we have the Buzz Robotics. And all of this is a theme from first. Every year in the fall, they put out a new theme. This one for this year was the arts. So it has to do with theater and movies. So all of these, there's like 15 different missions on the table. We didn't bring all 15. We just brought the ones that the students want to demonstrate today. So we're going to start with June and Sophia. You guys are up. So they have the- Program through block coding on the iPad, and they send it through Bluetooth to the robot, and then it completes the mission. Nice job. Kids are ready to drive. So right now, she's putting the museum piece in front. It's like their masterpiece, they call it. And they have to move it into the museum, and they would get points for that. And they have one more. So there are different spots on the board where they're sending, like the musician. There's a skateboarder spot that they would put them all in their little places on the board. Nice job. All right, Kayvon, you're up. Nice. Great job. All right, so that's it for our demonstration. Do you guys have any questions?
So is the mapping programmed on their iPad? Are they seeing, or is it all just coding and they're looking for numbers on the map? Like, how are they seeing the map on their iPad?
So do you guys want to go show them your iPad? Yeah. So go ahead, just go. Go ahead, walk up and show them. Kayvon, why don't you start on this side? So it's all block coding? They actually don't have the map on there?
I kind of know.
So they start this block coding in kindergarten? So we have lots of different programs throughout STEAM where they start this block coding. Any other questions?
Thank you to the students. Thank you to the staff that support this. My, I guess, wonder, or maybe just thing that I want to highlight, is that this starts in 5th grade and goes all the way through the high school. And there's this opportunity for progression and continued involvement, and for new students to kind of enter and involve. So thank you to the support and efforts of that. I've mentioned to some of you, my little guy did Invention Convention, which is different, but I could also see common interests and thoughts. And he's not yet a 5th grader, so I could see building blocks there as well. So thank you, students, for your hard work.
Nice job.
So I have a question for the students. Did you guys play LEGO, with Legos before this? Or is it something you more or less got interested in when you could do this?
I played with Legos before I did this.
Yeah, yeah. It's okay if you didn't.
I did play Legos before that.
Nice.
There is a little bit of a misconception. They think when they're joining First LEGO League that they're going to come and build Legos, but they actually don't. The teachers and usually some of the other students in the school are the ones who actually build all the missions. And then they come and they program them.
That's interesting. I know like a year or two ago, they started that show Lego Masters. It was amazing to see what people can build with Legos. When I was watching you move your Legos around, you were very confident. You were very calm, cool, and collected about what you were doing. I can tell how involved you are, and I really appreciate you coming out and showing us this demonstration. Coding is not something I understand. I don't know if many of us up here understand. So you are above and beyond where we were in 5th grade. So congratulations, and thank you for coming to show us.
Okay, I just had one question. How long does it usually take to program, let's just say, the robot in the corner, to come up and then go back? How long does it usually take you to code that sequence?
If you're really good at it, it probably takes a little, like, probably takes like, probably a couple minutes, but-
Oh, wow. I'm thinking like a week, but okay. That's pretty good. That's awesome.
If you're new, you can learn a lot about it, and you'll get better at it.
Awesome. Very cool.
I was going to say the same thing.
Awesome.
Same.
Same. Okay. Yeah, they were definitely making changes to it when they did it. So they started in the end of September, and they went to the beginning of December. They met twice a week. But it was great. At the showcase, they get four minutes on the playing board, and they were all making changes, like while it was happening right there.
Wow, that's awesome.
Right on the fly. Very cool.
Ms. Beebe, how are students selected for this? Is it an open club for anyone who's interested, or?
In the fall, the advisors that we have, they put out the advertisements and the permission slips that go home. So any 5th grader. Last year, we incorporated 4th graders because we didn't have that much of an interest with 5th graders. And a lot of those 4th graders came back this year as 5th graders.
I do have a question. But I, many of my questions have been answered. But I was curious to see if any of you have been to a Buzz Robotics competition. If you've been to one yet, they are pretty exciting. But I was curious, if you see yourself when you get to high school, do you think that that's something you'll be wanting to pursue? Being part of Buzz? It's really, yeah. This is such a great foundation. So thanks. We appreciate you being here.
That I don't expect you to have the answer on, but I think just knowing our duties and what kind of it takes to sustain this program and how we can ensure that we continue to support this opportunity for students. So I think that would be helpful to know.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you for bringing your awesome Legos and displaying them for us and showing them how they work. That's, you guys did an excellent job. Thank you very much. I'm waiting to see what you do in Buzz Robotics. I'm going to give them a couple minutes to pack their things away. Okay. Next up, B, Accountability Update. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Chairwoman Riley. So picking up where we left off at our last board meeting, we did a quick overview per the chairwoman's request about what it meant to be in Alliance District and what the Accountability Index was. And then we discussed that we would have a series of conversations moving forward, getting into each indicator that makes up the ultimate accountability score. So tonight, we welcome Michelle Middleton, our Chief Academic Officer, High School Principal Erin Clark, and our Director of Guidance, David White. And they're going to focus on, and we went a little bit out of order. And we're starting with indicator four, which is chronic absenteeism, which I'll obviously let our guests explain why. But this is the one indicator that actually impacts every student, K to 12, whereas some of the other indicators are designated for different levels of students. So we thought that was a good place to start. And I know there's usually questions as we start again into the spring about some of this stuff. So it's a good opportunity for us to get on camera and actually give the board some homework on this one as well. So I will turn it over to Ms. Middleton. I know they have a presentation for you, and then we'll try to turn it over and answer any questions if we can.
Hi, good evening. As Mr. Dreszek said, we've come today. I brought Ms. Clark and Mr. White. I know you can figure out which one's which, but. And we're going to talk about the Accountability Index, indicator number four. But we're also going to provide information on the Vision of a Graduate process as well. We included the Vision of a Graduate information in tonight's presentation because the work that the process leads to will further align our curriculum and instruction pre-K through 12. Also, I think you're going to find, as we talk about it and go on through the Accountability Index this year, that many of the index indicators are actually impacted by or reflected in the work of the Vision of a Graduate. And also, the Vision of a Graduate is an extremely important part of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, otherwise known as NIASK, their accreditation process, which JFK is in the beginning stages, and EHS is going to undergo again soon. So. Okay. The first part of this indicator is the definition. And our attendance policy is based on this, and it's based on the state's definition of chronic absenteeism. As Mr. Dreszek said, this is the only indicator that looks at K-12 students. All the rest have just certain pockets of students. It's based off the percentage of absences a student gets throughout the year. Chronic absenteeism for a whole year is usually 18 missed days. And if you think about it, that is two a month, and you're over the 18. I think what is important to highlight here, though, is that excused absences, unexcused absences, both count towards those 18. So the state doesn't look at the differentiation between excused and unexcused. That's the district's job, to be in contact with parents, be in contact with families and students, and put resources and supports in place. The state just cares about in-school or out of school. And that is the reason that the attendance letters go home, based on this definition. There are trigger amounts, trigger warnings in the system. Five missed days, nine missed days, 10, and then I think it's like everyone after 10, right? So that's why those letters go home. It's to make parents aware of where there's, how many absences their students have. Because again, the state is kind of looking at every day that you're not in attendance, it's lost instructional time. So that's the definition of that.
Michelle, before you jump on, this might be a good time for me to interject-
Oh, you're right. Sorry.
Just with, because we're getting to that time of year when some of the letters are still going out, and I get no more communication around these, as some people call nasty letters that they get. They say they're a bad parent because their kid isn't in school. Just so that people at home are aware, I say this every year. I'm a parent as well. I've gotten the letter. I wish I didn't have to send them, but the law requires that we do. One of the things you want to make your head spin a little bit, when it's highlighted on there, it says, "For any reason." I don't want to go backwards and look in the rearview mirror, but we can't forget what we've been through over the last couple of years. A lot of you will remember what the requirements for quarantining was throughout the last three years of a pandemic. Those days, so the state determined what the rules for quarantining was. We all remember if you're within six feet, 15 minutes, masked, unmasked, all that stuff. That wasn't our rules. That wasn't the board's rules. That wasn't mine. That was the state guidelines through DPH and the State Department of Ed. So the state told us when we had to quarantine students. And when we quarantined students, we would send them home for a minimum of five days. Initially, it was 10. But toward the end, it was when we got more accustomed to it, it was five days. Those five days, I'll pick on you, Mr. Ryder, because you have said that you have children in school. If we sent your son home for five days, those five days were counted in that letter. The state doesn't care. You're either in school or out of school. Now ironically, the state was the one that was telling us then, we had to send your child home, but yet we were still being, you as a parent, were still being penalized because your child wasn't in school. So there is some confusion, like, well, it was excused, my kid had the flu. We were, you know, we had a death in the family. In the eyes of the law, they don't care. What they care about is, was your child in school or not? And there's a lot of misconceptions. Unfortunately, those letters are going to come out again. They're going to probably start rolling out after the first of the year in some cases. Parents are going to reach out to me and say, "I'm not a bad parent." You're not. I got it too. But unfortunately, the law requires that we send those letters out. I just thought it was important to get that out because we're getting into that season now.
Britt, you remind me of something. At the end of last year, we rewrote the letters for every level. So the letters, the language in the letters is different. The elementary rewrote theirs, middle rewrote theirs, and Erin's going to touch on the high school. So they are different letters. The language, especially in the five absences, has, is not as, people were calling it harsh. It's not as harsh as it was. So just to, and also, schools are cognizant. There's a difference between five absences in November and five absences in May. So they're very cognizant of that, and they work with families. So the letters are to get families in communication with the schools so we can have conversations and make sure that we put supports in place and interventions to help the kiddos. So, okay. Okay, so the score, I know people want to know how this is scored. So this particular indicator, every indicator has a different weight. This particular indicator is a total of 100 points. 50 points for the all needs, all students score, and 50 points for the high need score. So the maximum total that you can get as a district is 100 points. The state target for chronic absenteeism is 5% or below. If you get 5% or below, you get 50 points for each indicator. Districts do not earn any points over 30%. So if you think about it, the points out of 50 that they're giving you for each of the two categories is between 6% and 29%. So when you see our numbers, they don't, it's not like it's, the percentages are weighted. They do some system sliding scale based on your percentage and then the 50 points. So in 2022, our rate for all students was 19.3% district-wide. We received 21.3 points out of 50 for that. Our rate for high-need students was 26.4% district-wide, and we received 7.3% out of 50. So remember what I said, the closer you get to 30, the lower the points are going to go down. So for this indicator, we received 28.6 out of a possible 100 points. That was our total towards our Accountability Index. So that's kind of how the numbers work.
So knowing that we have, we have students who are experiencing chronic absenteeism, we wanted to help share with the board and walk you through the different types of interventions that we have in place. And on the slide, you can see that it's split up by elementary and secondary. There's, there are a lot of interventions that are being used at both sets of levels, but I just wanted to help walk you through the different types of structures that are in place and how they're differentiated from one another. So every, every building, every school has its own attendance team. It's comprised of administrators, secretaries, counselors, social workers, various support staff. So it's not a solo undertaking. We realize that we have a lot of students who are absent, and we've got a lot of ongoing communication. So that's an additional bullet point you see here is family contact and outreach. Really, a primary goal that we have is to try and foster as many relationships as we can to help support parents and help support their sons and daughters so they can be in school hopefully every day, or as much as, as much as possible. So through a lot of that family engagement, we run situations where families need a few additional resources. And that leads to different types of referrals, and we've got, we've got those listed here. So we're fortunate to have relationships with Enfield Social Services, EFRC. We also lean on resources through DCF and the Community Health Center. So it was, and it was also explained, we've got attendance letters that get mailed home. Those are automatically generated, just depending on number of absences, whether it's five, nine, 10, and so on. But a way that this differentiates when you get to the secondary level is the, the building sizes are obviously much bigger when you get to JFK and the high school. So the setup, there are still attendance meetings and attendance teams. But in order to make the feel of JFK smaller and the feel of EHS a little bit smaller, in JFK, you've got houses. So, you know, red, white, and blue house for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. Each house has its own secretary and administrator. It's the same at the high school level. You've got the 9th grade office, 10th grade office, and so on. They've got their own secretary for each, for each office within the high school. So a lot of communication happens on a, on a daily basis for JFK and EHS, especially with the secretaries. So they're reviewing attendance data really period by period, trying to find out who's absent, and then immediately reach out to families and to parents just to help explain that, you know, a student was marked absent. So there's a ton of daily engagement that goes on. And really, a huge help comes from the secretaries at all levels because they're putting in a lot of, really a lot of groundwork to help get in touch with parents, just so we can maintain regular communication. An additional, an additional aspect over at JFK is within each grade, there are teams within each grade. And those teams also have their own form of communication that goes on throughout the year with parents as they notice different situations with students in classes. And they also want to have heightened communication with a lot of families. Again, at the secondary level, you see a lot of agency referrals so that we can try and better, better support parents. And then going on down the list, we have different types of meetings. So there are students who've got different types of plans, whether it's an intervention plan, 504 plan, a special ed, IEP. And we can use those, those avenues so that we can set up different types of meetings just as additional ways to try and further engage families, whether it's to talk about attendance and absenteeism, or even academic support at the same time. And finally, we've got some home visits that we've done at different levels. Sometimes families can't make it over to our school buildings. So we try to, try to meet families where they are and try and support them at their houses.
One unique aspect at the high school level is the weight of credit on students earning the course, the graduation requirements they need to graduate. So students must not exceed a certain allowed number of absences if they're going to earn credit for a course. And this is an adjustment for 9th grade students. It's a unique aspect of the high school. So we spend a good deal of time at our freshman orientation and our parent programming, emphasizing the importance of attendance in high school. One of the things we've done this year, because credit plays such a large role at the high school, we have had in the past two sets of letters and two sets of communications that went home for parents. So we had the district required letters that go home, that are required by the state. But we also had warning loss of credit letters for students who are exceeding the allowed absences. So that was sometimes cumbersome and confusing for families. So we've streamlined those letters into one letter that accomplishes both goals, improving our messaging at the high school.
One item that, although we do have interventions and we will continue to build upon them, one item that we were going to put, that was put in the Alliance Plan for our district was going to be an attendance officer for the district to conduct regular home visits, create relationships with families, and connect families to resources. We felt that this would strengthen what we were already doing. Somebody K-12 might easier pick on, pick up on patterns of siblings, a family that may need more resources if they were at different levels. That is something that we would still hope to accomplish at some point. But that was another intervention we wanted to put into place.
Just to add to that, and we've talked a lot through over the years about, you know, do we need to require a plan? Just as a refresher, I know I mentioned this last week, or two weeks ago. So the plan that we require as an Alliance District to create is based upon the grant. So when you're allotted money, the plan is, the state wants to know how you're going to spend the money they're allocating for this. The decision is that we have to create a plan, submit it to the Commissioner of Ed. The Commissioner then adopts the plan. And the criteria for whether the plan gets ultimately approved by the Commissioner is, does it align to addressing the Accountability Index? So the things we're talking about today. So within that, we've had two iterations of the plan for the last two years, thinking that we were going to get some Alliance funding. Obviously, that didn't happen. But one of the things in anticipation was addressing this indicator because obviously, our kids can't perform where we want them to perform if they're not in school. So as they're wrapping up this portion of the presentation, I've had conversations with a lot of you, particularly new board members, about being eager to get started. Like, all right, it's a new term. We want to get, we want to get- Like, all right, it's a new term, we want to get, we want to get rolling. Here's something tangible. We have, we've outlined what the district's responsibility, what the administration's responsibility is in, in helping this. The nine of you also have a platform. Any sort of communication, any sort of reassurance to families to get your kids in school would be extremely helpful. I don't care how they get there, as long as they show up. And there's a lot of miscommunication at times. I know things happen. People have, have family. Some people can only go on vacation and they off week because it's, you know, they have a family member. Those days count. So just clarifying for the public, and as you talk to people in your, in your roles, that this is what it means to be an excused/unexcused absence, and this is what loss of instruction time, and this is what's held against us when we're, when we're ultimately getting scored on some of these things. So this is something all of us are in together. I don't think anybody in this room disagrees that we want, we need to improve this. These are some of the interventions that we have in place. We were hopeful that we would have more, but this is not something that, well, we didn't get the money, we're going to stop. We're still going to use the staff we have to get our kids in school every day, and they're, they're being overly polite by saying it. So I know you want to move on to the next part, so I will shut up.
So Mr. White hit on some of the action steps we're taking as a district to address chronic absenteeism, just one of the indicators of the Next Generation Accountability Index rating. However, we're also thinking big picture and trying to be proactive about making sure our educational programming is meeting the needs of our students. The vision of the graduate is a process to do that. So as members of the steering committee for the district, we would like to share an overview of the process that we are planning and answer a few questions. What is a vision of a graduate? Why this work? And what is the process? So in summary, a vision of a graduate is a shared understanding of our community about what we believe our students should improve and develop, which skills they should improve and develop as a result of their time in Enfield Public Schools. We'll get into the details in a little bit. Why are we doing this? Clearly communicating our goals and our vision will help us align our instruction, our assessment practices, and our curriculum development in the district. And it'll serve for, as a guiding light for all our work here. And it is also required by the New England Association accreditation process. So you can see on this slide, a version of a vision of a graduate from another school district in Connecticut, surrounding schools in New England. Some have already developed theirs, some are in the process. We are just starting the process here. That's mostly because of where we were on the accreditation cycle for the high school in 2018, when it was a different process. You'll notice they created a easy-to-read infographic with not too much language that highlights the larger skills that they've identified as essential for student learning. So the process in a nutshell is really engaging our stakeholders, our students, our educators, our parents, our families, our community members, and letting us know what are the things they value, what do they believe are important skills for our students to master. And I think it's important to note that this type of work is not new to Enfield. In 2016, 17, in preparation for consolidating the two high schools in town, we reached out to our stakeholders. We asked our community partners, what do we value in town? From that, we designed our core values, our learning expectations, and that has driven a lot of our work in developing learning tasks and performance assessments for students at Enfield High School. So this is work that we want to expand for the whole district. And it's important to revisit this work because, I think it's been mentioned in previous board meetings, there's changing needs in our community, there's changing needs of our students, the workforce is changing, the economy is changing, and we need to be able to adapt and continuously revisit what our goals are. A little bit about the skills that we will identify as a community. So these are skills that should transcend one subject area. They should be something that might be covered in multiple subject areas, so big-picture skills or dispositions. They should, this vision of a graduate should answer the question, what are our highest hopes for our graduates in Enfield Public Schools? What do we want them? How will we prepare them for whatever post-secondary path they choose? How will we prepare them to be informed citizens? And how will we prepare them to live fulfilling and meaningful lives? And whatever skills we decide upon as a community, they should be ones that focus on growth and allow for growth over the course of several years and help align our curriculum from the lower grades all the way into the secondary grades.
Oh, it's me, sorry. So as Erin said, this work is meant to align all of our work pre-K through 12. And if our goal is for our students to obtain these skills by graduation for use in their world after, after school, then we need to expose them to these skills early on and keep, make sure that they can grow and develop these skills as they go through their instruction in a scaffolded way throughout their years at Enfield Public Schools. So it's intended to ensure that, that all students graduate with the skills that the community identifies and defines, and, and it, again, it's going to affect our curriculum and instruction pre-K through 12.
Something that we want to add in here, and as you can see on the screen, our, our beliefs as a district, as, really as part of this vision of a graduate process, we know it's important to keep our district's beliefs in mind as we're, as we're moving through each step. So we are, we want all the people, all the parties involved, stakeholders, to be mindful of the district's beliefs and the uniqueness of our students and learners, and also keep in mind the importance of each student feeling welcomed and valued and supported as we help every student every day.
So I, I touched on this a bit, but the product, how it's communicated, really matters. It needs to be accessible not only to educators but to students and families and should serve as a guiding light for the work that we do. And as I mentioned, in, when we did similar work at the high school, because we had these learning expectations, we were able to design assessment tools such as rubrics and then learning tasks that would effectively assess that learning. So it can be a really, it can be a visual infographic, but it can also be a powerful tool for driving teaching and learning.
So the first step in this process is to engage stakeholders. We've already started with our teachers and all staff members in August that are professional learning. Now, focus groups and for all stakeholders to identify the skills, the overarching skills is the first step. Then you have to actually define the skills because the skills are broad. So the definition will, what, what does that mean that students can do under those, those skills? This work is going to take the rest, most if not all of the rest of the 2023, 2024 school year. That's the first stage of the process. The second stage of the process is then the implementation. And the implementation is where you look at your curriculum and instruction pre-K through 12, and you make sure that there are places for these skills to be taught, to be assessed, and to be practiced by kids. And that's how you get to the end where they leave high school having mastered them, hopefully.
So on our last two slides here, this is just a visual overview of what Michelle was just describing. So we've, we've begun the vision of a graduate work recently, you know, in the summer of 2023. Our next steps are really working with different stakeholders so we can identify our, our primary skills that we want to focus on for our vision of a graduate for Enfield students. And you can actually go to the next slide, Erin. Looking beyond, Michelle touched on this too. So this is a multi-year endeavor. It's not, it's not going to be finished just within this year, but it's going to take a couple of years. And once we've identified those integral skills that we want to focus on, then our next steps after that are going to be working on incorporating, aligning curriculum and assessments so that the work that we're doing at every level, pre-K through 12, is helping to contribute towards those overarching goals of having a, you know, a subset of identified skills that are being improved upon year by year for our students.
That's our presentation. So this would be the question portion, I would assume.
Awesome. No, thank you. That was, that was actually really exciting. I'm, I'm pretty excited to see what happens with this. This is really cool. All right. Questions, comments? Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. I have to say, you had some of Ms. Pickett's favorite words in there, particularly measurable. I just took stakeholders. That's another, accessible. So just a couple of things came to mind. I was going to ask you who was going to be in the focus groups, but then you explained that on the slide. But this makes me think of the whole pre-K through five, or the K through five modernization, that this would come into play with the culmination of talking about the curriculum and
Absolutely.
If that's something that's still going to happen, I think it would be important because then you would have, at the same time that we're doing, redoing the school's K through five, you would have really good, robust conversations with the K through five staff and parents who kind of live through the K through two, three through, three, three through five world. I, every time we hear about like what was in our alliance plan is, is very frustrating as far as, you know, the absenteeism. I have so many issues with what the state defines and what the state says, and it's just kind of, you know, they have to, they have to have laws, but they're very blink it, and they're, they're, they don't always mold to the needs of a specific district. So I see, you know, what's happening there with parents, you know, getting the letter. And I also, I thought I would mention too, like in high school, two tardies equals one absence. So if you are late too many times, that doesn't, that's not a get out of jail free card, you are also accruing absences.
No. And I think there is a big misconception that excused means it doesn't count, and it, that's not, that's not, that's not true.
Yes. I think it's, it's really important too, and if you look at the amount of absences they could have for a full-year class or a half-year class, it's pretty, it's pretty okay. Like, you should be able to fall within those lines for the half-year and then the full-year class. So I wanted to talk about that, but yeah, as far as your vision of what a graduate is, I would think less transitions is going to be a focus because right now, if you start in stow, you're looking at four transitions. So that's something that would be something to think about. So I really appreciate your presentation. It was very in-depth. Any questions I had were answered on the next slide or a couple of slides over. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the fact that you're just taking little bits and piecing them together rather than biting off more that you can chew. Obviously, you know, you want to see this succeed, and so do we. So I really appreciate your, your approach and your presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Erin, I heard you talk more today than the whole year on a soccer field. As far as counting absences, injury and illness still just goes right along, huh?
Yes. Any, any reason is any missed day of school. They have in attendance, what in attendance means, and it's basically that you're in school for at least half a day participating in classes. If you're not in attendance, then you're absent.
When you said two tardies equal an absence, is that a state mandate or a town mandate?
That is our town policy. Two tardies equals one absence.
That's at the high school level, I believe, for credit.
Yeah.
It's about the amount of classes that are missed.
Right.
And can you have a legitimate excuse for being tardy?
Well, if kids have a legitimate excuse, it wouldn't count against them. So if they were meeting with a teacher, it wouldn't count against them, but if they're just blowing off at the beginning of class, then it counts against them.
How many kids do we have in the high school now?
1,500.
And how many are involved in vocac?
How many tech ed students?
Voc, yes. Tech ed, voc ed.
I don't know that off the top of my head. Quite a few, we have a lot of tech ed classes.
Somebody behind me may know that.
Somebody know?
It's more than 900 a year.
Thank you. Like John Day would know.
900 kids involved in tech ed?
Between all of our career and technical education, that would be feminine, consumer science, culinary, tech ed. So yeah, there's quite a number of students involved.
Okay, so that falls right into the needs of the community and stuff.
If we're taking two or more credits, if you have about 240 students a year graduating with two or more CTE credits.
Can I just add to that, Peter? I just wanted to let you know, like, when we went to the block scheduling, it made it much more accessible for students to incorporate those types of classes into their schedule. Plus, we have numerous course offerings for it now, more than I've ever seen on my term on the board.
How long, how long are the class periods now?
Varies on the day, but they're anywhere between
Well, you get a term, X amount of time for each week, right?
Right. So some classes are approximately 78 minutes, some are up to 85 minutes on the longer periods. And then we have shorter days where we have Eagle Block where they're a little shorter.
What's a little shorter?
65 to 72 minutes, around that range.
And that's a seven-period schedule?
We do an eight, we do a four-period schedule, but it's eight classes over the course of two days. So we have four periods on an A day, four periods on the B day with all different classes.
I guess what I'm looking at is history, math, science, English. How much time are they getting?
The, the same amount of time. So 84 minutes, 78 minutes, depending on the day. They're getting, it's basically two class periods in one day. And then the next day, they meet the other four. There are no study halls at the high school anymore.
Okay. So it's nothing like the middle school where it's 42 minutes a day or
No.
Very different than it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to be honest, I'm going to share a lot of feedback because this is very exciting work, but I've also heard about it before. And my guess is, I don't expect any answers, and I can follow up with an email if that would be helpful, because my guess is this is, like you shared, continued work that's going to be coming. So thank you. The first is, A, around high school schedule and stuff. Our graduate requirement outlines all of the courses that have to be taken that fit in the schedule, so that might be helpful information. Questions that I have, sharing of the data, 19.3% of our students are missing 10% of their instruction. Over a quarter of them, of our most, actually, over a quarter of our most vulnerable students are missing 10% of their instruction, correct? To me, this demonstrates a really big overall need. I mean, that's not just a few kids, that's a lot of kids. So I guess in all of kind of sharing those interventions, how much capacity we're using to follow up with families, have personal visits, all of that, my wonder is how, what have we determined as root causes? Personally, I see attendance as a data point, why kids aren't coming to school, coming to school late, skipping certain classes versus others. There's so many different reasons. I'd also be interested to know what happens when we start disaggregating the data. Are there certain grade bands where we can say like, huh, what's happening here? Courses at the high school? My guess is that there's trends in like, maybe some required math courses or something. And that reminds me of curriculum meetings where we've talked about programs that we're using to try to keep kids engaged and on track because once kids have missed too many days, then it becomes almost reinforcing to not come to school because you're going to miss credit or not pass anyways. So like, thinking about those pieces, like, what are the root causes for why kids aren't coming to school? And how do our interventions directly match those? Letters and notification, like, those are all nice, but they're really notification, not intervention. So those pieces, I also can't help but think when we think about attendance as data, discipline impacts attendance as well. So if we just pulled out how many of our absences are because of suspension expulsion, what is that impact? And are there just some systemic resources or solutions that we could have that would impact those pieces? And that gets to my piece around our role as a board, policy-wise. Personally, hearing things like two tardies equals an absence, like some of that language makes me a little worried because there's so much bias in excused/unexcused, who determines that? Even just in practices, I've sat in some schools where like if it's not noted or teacher misses attendance, like it's defaulted to something. So thinking about how do we, how do those policies that we create impact, what does it look like in practice? And how might that be impacting students' credit retrieval or denial and on track to graduate? Because I think all of our job is to get kids out the door and ready for high school or ready for life, but also acknowledging what their needs are. I mentioned those things I would share. I know it's disappointing hearing about the attendance grant. I would say that we need to continue advocating at the state level for funding for our school. I'm not exactly sure if I would agree that it's a good use of our resources for a staff member looking just at attendance. I think we've heard a lot about our comprehensive work and thinking about how do we look at our, all of our data points and how do we respond in a multi-tiered way to students? But it's frustrating to hear that. Switching to vision of a graduate, so excited for this. I think I would agree it needs to be done collaboratively. There's so many partners that I think we can engage in resources that they just did some community. So I think Kite has some reports, things like that, that might be helpful for us to incorporate in feedback. I was recently at the high school for an event, and I noticed I was recently at the high school for an event and I noticed the core values in the cafeteria. Are those new?
2018.
Really? Okay. For some reason, maybe it was a table closet around the table, like they popped and it looked really nice. So I guess I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question you can answer, why we would define and come up with like what we want as core values before we would pause and look at our kind of curriculum and what we are teaching students? Because I heard in our SEL presentation last year, all of the good work that we're doing about explicitly teaching students skills in various ways. And my wonder is, how can we maybe minimize curricular impact or take some like language that we know is existing and working and use that feedback to also help us trim the list?
I don't, I don't think reassessing our community's values and needs means we have to scrap everything that we've done. I think there's a lot of great work that's being done. In fact, I think if you look at the learning expectations for the high school, I'm sure the other levels are going to say, we want our kids to be constructive collaborators. We want our kids to be discerning users of technology. But I do think revisiting what's important to our community might shape and create some new experiences for kids.
Thank you. So basically overall, I'm excited to continue to hear more about this work. Sorry, I always have a lot to say, but I think this is the important work that's being done. So thank you for taking the time to discuss it, share the information. Hopefully, we can work through policy and curriculum to support the needs.
Thanks, Amanda. Phil, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for coming out. I definitely have a lot of questions, but in the spirit of keeping the night short, I'm probably not going to ask them all. I think Mrs. Pickett had some good points and with de-aggregating data and kind of looking at trends, I'm definitely interested in that. Just a quick question for the first one, and I don't know if you guys know this off the top of your head, if you could just ballpark, but you're talking about excused, unexcused absences. If you had to put a number on it, is it half and half? Is it swaying one way or the other? What would you, what's your perception of the majority of these chronic absenteeism cases?
The majority are excused. In my case, I would say, Dave, would you say so at the other levels as too?
Yeah, I would say that the majority are excused absences because you've got so much communication between, especially between secretaries and parents, that we're getting some sort of notification one way or another. If it's a student's absent because they're ill, there's a situation in the family. But yeah, I would say that the majority are excused.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's good to know because like we were talking about quarantines, illness, stuff like that, where regardless of policy and engagement, you're, we're probably not going to be able to change that. So focusing on efforts on, on things we could change. The other question, and you talked about having absentee teams and I think focus groups, have you guys noticed any trends with, and you know, we don't have the 2021 numbers in front of us, but to say the numbers were the same, is it the same students that you guys have seen chronically absent year by year? Do you see a change in the pool? Do you have any, I guess, insight or thoughts on that that would be helpful?
I don't have that information. I do believe there are some trends with some same students, but I, I honestly, I'm not at the building level doing the absenteeism, so I don't know. But that's something that I could pull the schools about and get to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I know this is kind of seen if you had a broad brush idea. It's, it's fine that you don't, and that's maybe something I'll follow up, you know, through the chair to the superintendent, back to you guys, just to get some insight on. But I think that would be important to know. Is it the same students year by year or, you know, one year they were out for COVID, they hit it, this year they're good and they're in honors, so.
I think it's probably a mixture of both of what you just said. I think there are some trends with some students and I think there are some students that may go through something one year and don't have to worry about that the next. But I, like I said, I could definitely follow up.
Yeah, awesome. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody? I'm just going to add a thing. About the two tardies equal and equals an absence. So in the case of, when I had high school students, come April or May with the seniors, they are late and the school is in communication. You know, if they're late, they will, and you didn't leave a message on the absentee line, they're calling you to find out where your student was. And we got a letter that said if the student, you can probably guess which one, is late, you know, this is what they've accumulated for absences. And I don't think it's, it's so much of a punishment, but it also keeps the school, the school gets involved at that point to be contacting the family and saying, you know, why they're always late. And I think, you know, it's, and then you get the letter home and they explain why. Plus, if you see Power School, you can go on yourself and you can, and account for it. So I think at, at that point too, especially for the older kids that can get to school on their own, it's definitely accountability, especially for the seniors.
It's also really important for instruction, those first few moments of class or when you hook students. With our brain-based learning initiative, we're asking teachers to really engage students off the bat when they come in the room and get their brains activated. So we're emphasizing with kids, this is not just about compliance with rules, this is about, this is what's good for your brain and how you can better learn the information.
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, I'm probably crossing over between curriculum and what you're doing. With what you're trying to do to get these kids acclimated or ready to leave school, what are we doing for the problem kids who are really having trouble reading and writing? Grade levels below.
There's a difference between the content and there's a difference between the vision of a graduate. The vision of a graduate is like overarching skills. We do have academic interventions in place for students that are struggling at, at every level. And that'll probably be talked about more when I come to talk about the academic piece of the accountability index, but we do have interventions in place. These skills that we're talking about are things like problem solving or digital citizenship or collab, you know, a capable collaborative creativity, capable collaborator, something where they can use that skill in all content areas. And honestly, I think it's some of the things that we hear from people, businesses, that, that they want kids to leave school knowing how to do, not necessarily some of the other things, but they want kids to be able to solve a problem on their own or, or work with a team, communicate effectively, things like that. So in answer to your question, we do have interventions in place for math and reading throughout, you know, K through 12 to help kids that are struggling.
When will we be here, when will we be hearing from you about those programs?
I, when, probably January, I would think.
So I failed to mention that the Chairwoman Riley had asked, brief presentation. So we could get into the weeds on just one indicator and be here for hours. So that was my fault. I should have started that with the conversation. But it's our plan to, as we continue with board meetings, to introduce different indicators meeting by meeting and then allow not just obviously Michelle in certain areas, but the most affected staff members to come and share insight like our guest here tonight did with this particular area. So we've kind of went out of order, you know, numerically because chronic absenteeism affects every student, not just when you look at some of the academic data, it can be just grades four to eight, you know, graduation rates is high school. This affects everyone. And honestly, this is at the core, if our kids aren't here, they're not going to perform as well. So this, we, we believe is a good starting point, but this is going to be a series of conversations for the remainder of the year until we hit all 12.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I have a couple of questions. And you may not have the answers now, and that's cool. Do you know where we are in relation to the state average or other alliance schools in regards to this indicator?
I do not. I think we are close to the state, but that is information I could get to the superintendent for you. Absolutely.
Sorry if I would interject, you can also go onto EdSite. That is all publicly reported and monthly, monthly reported by subgroup as well. So that's all publicly available data.
Yes. I just wanted to get it out there.
I also believe, I also believe that when, I, I don't remember, I'm sorry, but I think when Mr. Dreszek did show the graphs, the trends, I believe he had the state up there. We are not much different. They are not at 5% or lower. So.
We outpaced the state in this particular indicator. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's see here. I remember when we were on the board, and I don't know the impact of it back then, but a couple of you might remember. Do you remember when we did the, the day one marketing thing?
Yes.
That, I mean, I'm assuming that mine had been semi-successful, but maybe we should try that again. That's just a suggestion.
I actually was thinking about that the other day when I was, when we were talking about interventions and different things put in place. I do remember the day one marketing, that they were all over town. Yeah, that was great.
Every school building, it was awesome. In regards to like family outreach and agency referrals and like home visits, I'm assuming it's like some mesh between like what the teacher notices and what their absentee report is with the office and then the school would decide or you guys, you would decide when we make that outreach to them?
So a lot of that comes just in conversation between school staff and parents and parents might be explaining a need that they have. And it could be like a need for therapeutic type services or it could be a need for, literally for, you know, for food support. And we, you know, hear what the need is and then we just try to help patch the parent through to whatever type of agency could be able to support them.
Awesome. In regards to credits, do high school students get the opportunity to make up credits that they may have lost?
We did add last year a credit recovery program that is offered to certain students who qualify. So if there is a need, and we try to prioritize seniors in danger of not graduating, but others have been approved for it. It's been highly successful in giving kids hope who may have lost credit early on, you know, be successful in getting those credits.
Cool. And is that something that they would do like before or after school or?
Currently, it happens during the school day. We staff our credit recovery center and students may come in for, you know, a half year, one period and work on various credits that maybe they almost earned the year before, but it might catch them up to their graduation status.
Okay, cool. I really like how you brought in, you know, all the stakeholders were involved with it because I have talked to a lot of people when we were out knocking doors, and that was a big thing, that they wanted our students to be prepared for what awaits them once they get that diploma in their hand. And some business owners did come up to some of us and say, you know, we would like them to be able to do these things and those things are on your list. So that, that's really good. Thank you very much for this presentation. I think it was super helpful and, you know, very educational to get it out there.
Thank you. And I would like to take a moment, Mr. Dreszek and I have been talking about, I want to just touch base on kindergarten for a second and the age change and the waiver. So we are very aware of what is happening and I know some parents are anxious. We are in the process right now, by we, I mean myself, pre-K staff and primary staff, of looking at what an assessment would be that would be appropriate, what the expectations a student should have on that assessment to prove that they are kindergarten ready. We will have the process and the assessment and all of that in place by May 1st, which seems far away, but anybody who's thinking about that for their child, we wouldn't be assessing them now anyway, they're too little. So this would probably be assessments that would be done after the school year ends. So that we are aware, we are working on it and more information will be coming. I know some of the principals have been giving that message to their parents who have asked about it. I also would like to find out what other districts are doing as well and just get a feel for what's happening across the state, but we are looking at different options that we have for that. So that we're working on it.
Question.
Yeah.
To enter kindergarten, what's the cutoff date?
They just changed it. It used to be January 1st and now it's September 1st. If you now have a child whose birthdate falls between September 2nd and the end of that calendar year, you can apply for a waiver, but we need to have an assessment that we can give all students with equal measures and equal, equal benchmarks they have to hit to then be accepted into kindergarten, you know, a day early or four months early, depending on when the birthday happens.
And that's the state?
That's the state. And it goes into effect this next school year.
And there is no statewide assessment?
No, there is no statewide assessment. It's not that easy.
Right. So the state did not give you a piece of paper that says, here's what you're going to do. You have to make it up.
No, no, no. The legislators did not and neither did the State Department of Education. So we're looking at various options.
And there will not be one coming?
No, there will not. So.
Okay.
We are on, so if any parents approach you, I just wanted you all to have that message and my voice is being heard by parents now, so hopefully that'll put them at ease.
So Madam Chair, is that something we should put on the agenda for the Policy Committee? Because I believe we have a local Board of Ed policy and our policy still says January 1st.
You're, we did discuss that, yes.
Yes. That's another adjustment that's going to have to go through policy. That's one of those state changes that affect your policy that you have to pass whether you want it or not. But yes, that's going to be coming up on the policy.
And when we decide on the assessment, I will bring it in front of curriculum as well. So I will let you know what the assessment is and what, you know, I'll, I'll come with the primary principals and we'll talk about what we decided upon and what the actual cutoff scores would be.
Here's the best part about the legislation. They said that the assessment, the determination on the assessment, it's local, but ultimately the assessment is ruled by the building principal. Not me.
We, we will have.
I'm kidding, obviously it's going to be all those, but that's like the one thing they've done for superintendents.
Across all three buildings with common expectations.
It will do it universal, but I just got a kick out of it. It's the one thing the state didn't say the superintendent's got to do.
Yeah, no.
Thanks for that.
Sorry, I have one silly comment. Not that I love state mandates, but I would say sometimes it's helpful not to have a prescribed universal tool. And I think some of that might be, I know we use assessment tools at Stowe for like our integrated program and such. My wonders or my, my guess is we have some instruments already.
I am starting at the pre-K identifying things that would be appropriate to assess grade five. That's the thing too, though. You know, if you're going to assess, you have to assess a five-year, not grade five, a five-year-olds. So we are working on that and then we're going to get a larger committee together. So we've got a plan and a process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so last board guess, we've got indoor air quality and HVAC evaluation update.
They're back. It's like a buddy movie. We want to welcome John Daig and Fred Gerber, you men from last week. They have an update on our indoor air quality evaluation process. So I will allow, they are much smarter than I am when it comes to this stuff and in general. So John and Fred, welcome back.
You might get tired of hearing from us.
Never.
But we'll be back again. So we're here tonight, there is a board policy and a state law around reporting indoor air quality and HVAC standards within the school. So every three years since January 1st, 2003, so any building that's been renovated since that date, we have to come and give a uniform inspection of air quality and an update and that has to be publicly available. So we'll put that on to the website. A new law that's just coming into effect is we have to have a uniform inspection of all buildings HVAC system and there's specific criteria listed in each and those criteria are listed in the policy. But just for reference here, we're talking about things like filter efficiency, air delivery, operation of components, maintenance, so on. So that's just a kind of overview of the law itself. So there's no action for you to take tonight. This is informational for you, it's informational for the public and these documents will be posted publicly on the district's website and the individual school building websites. We're only going to be able to share preliminary findings tonight. As part of our review for the compliance, we found that the reports did not contain some of the necessary information in the new law. Those include things like airflow measurements, filter efficiency tests and the data accompanying it. It's very prescriptive and that they want airflow at each of the units or vents. So in this room, you need about the five vents in here. They listed the equipment and schedule, but we just need that actual data to accompany it and that helps the district inform whether our air systems are balanced appropriately and where we need to make changes specific to the room, unit, piece of equipment and so on. So when those addendums come in, the contractor has to put that data back into the draft reports that we have now and make some other changes. We will post that as an addendum and that might be after the January 1st, but we hope to have the initial narrative portion of the reports on the website prior to January 1st, tentatively the 29th. This might look familiar if you watched the September 26th presentation we did for the pre-K through 5 school modernization committee. As part of that, we went a little bit beyond and did indoor air quality. We did indoor air quality testing as part of that. That's not required in the law, it was just HVAC function. There's a couple of different things that they were looking for in there: temperature, relative humidity, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, particulates in the air, VOCs, formaldehyde, and mold. The standards for each of those are there. I just wanted to point out for mold, there is no formal accepted standard. Just like I'd mentioned before, they're taking a sample outside the building, that's considered your background, and then you have samples within the building. If there's amplification, that means if there's a significant amount of spores difference between inside and outside, that becomes a positive route. There are some accepted standards, just as far as within practice for indoor air qualitying, and that's that 2,500 counts per meter cubed. If you look at, and since these reports are going to be public, it's going to also include the raw lab reports. People aren't familiar with looking at those, I just wanted to go through some of that so that if people want to take a look at these, they'll understand. These samples will be color-coded by organism, and the color code key is on the bottom. It's going to include, it's called the raw count, that's how many spores they collected within the sample per volume of air. And it's going to be the count expanded up to a cubic meter of air. And there's also a column that says percent total. So what they counted a certain number of spores, and it's going to give you the percent of the total number of each species in there. It adds up to 100. If you're looking at that percentage, just don't think that it's 100% mold, right? It's just the percent of the sample that contained it. If there are blanks on the chart, that means they didn't count any spores of that kind or any of significance to report on there. Not every one of these came back clean. We put one of the ones that came back with a high count, and that was actually in the EHS auto room, and we'll explain that when we get a little bit further into it. But there were two cases where they did find higher counts. So, indoor air quality findings. At Enfield High School, they found the indoor temperature was generally within range. So these tests occurred in late September. Relative humidity was high. Fred had pointed out that actually on one of the days that they were testing, it was actually absolutely pouring.
If we did that, if we did that same test today, it would obviously be a much different result.
It would obviously be a different result. But when it's tropical and pouring, it can affect the indoor. Carbon monoxide was very low, standards at 50, it's at 1.3. CO2 was actually a little bit of a surprise. There was quite a range in the different places that they sampled. So that shows that there is a need for balancing, and we can do that effectively once we have those readings for flow in each of the rooms, and that's when we can make the adjustment. Just opening up the dampers all the way and flooding the building with fresh air might sound great until you got the electric bill for that. It would be like air conditioning the outside, right? So, want to make, do that judiciously. Dust was, no dust amplification, they basically couldn't, see any VOCs or volatile organic compounds were below lead standard, which was good. And there was no formaldehyde, being that this building has been open for a few years, the glues, carpet glutes, the material in the particle board for the desks, all of that is not showing up on testing.
John, can I just interrupt for one second? I just, Chair One Riley, can you do something out of order? Can I ask you to take a five-minute recess so that we can have building maintenance come in and address something in the room really quick? I just got a message, if we could take a quick five-minute recess, someone's here to fix something, and we can come right back.
Okay. Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second motion.
Motion by Tina, second by Ms. Pickett. Show hands. Okay.
Nope, nope.
Okay. We good to go with ETV?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, we are back in order. For those people at home in YouTube land, one of the light fixtures was impending doom, but we're good now.
So, Enfield High School, I mentioned that one test result that I had showed earlier. There was actually a fungal spore that was higher than baseline that was found in the EHS auto room. They had recommended remediation. Actually, prior to getting the report, we think this was addressed, it was a cardboard box in the shop floor sitting on the concrete. That was removed, the shop was cleaned, and a retest November 7th, there was no issue. It was back to baseline measurement for that.
Just to add to that, the company that did the testing, I worked very closely with them when the issue came up, and they specifically said to look for something that was associated with paper or cardboard, that is a common, it's a common problem. They've, they said it was really not too out of the ordinary to find.
So we just know in the shop area, just not to allow cardboard boxes to sit on the concrete floor. John F. Kennedy, actually being the newest building, the indoor temperature was generally within range, humidity was slightly above, but again, we just mentioned it was absolutely pouring on one of the days of test. Carbon monoxide didn't go over one part per million, CO2 was in the acceptable range. There was no dust amplification. VOCs were generally below lead standard, and formaldehyde was well below the limit. I think there were few areas with VOCs a little bit higher, but that was expected with carpet glue and new things in the building. There was also one slightly elevated level in the green wing. Remediation was recommended for that. That was actually just a water fountain drain. The test, you could see, we put the picture, the test meter was sitting on top of the water fountain, and it was likely just coming up from the drain. Fountain was cleaned, retested November 7th, no issue. HVAC assessments, these are the ones that are pending data. Enfield High and JFK and Eagle Academy, we have very few concerns with those buildings. They're relatively new designs, they're going to be code compliant for meeting temperature, humidity, and their airflow. We know that there's probably balancing needed with the buildings, but we should be able to meet those. The pre-K through 5 schools, Alcorn and the Annex, in our reports, and this is not news, we did this with the pre-K through 5 school modernization committee, a large percentage of the equipment is nearing or exceeding its service life at the edge of the building. And there was already an identified need for makeup air. That was in our initial reports we shared back in September, that there were recommendations to replace unit ventilators in the rooms at minimum. There are limitations to doing extensive HVAC work in our current buildings at the K-5 level. The design of the buildings, the overall condition and the infrastructure, even adding air conditioning to some buildings would not be possible due to the electrical constraints. You simply wouldn't be able to add more because you don't have enough power. We addressed that overall, I think, I just wanted to say, overall, our buildings are fit for occupancy. Indoor air quality, including microbial, came back as such. The HVAC function right now, design standards show that the buildings do have enough to meet standard. However, we will have to back that up, and that's why I put that asterisk there with the actual test data at each of the vents. Some of the major systems that were called out that were needing to be replaced or getting close to the end of their service life were called out in that DPW 10-year capital improvement plan. And the HVAC was a major concern, consideration when we began the pre-K through 5 school modernization work. So, that's something that we'd hope to address through that process at the K-5 schools. Are there any questions?
Go ahead.
At the moment, when the equipment runs its course and repairs have to be made, is it our responsibility or the town's responsibility to do that?
The town owns the building.
Yep.
So the town has budgeted for, like I mentioned, they have a 10-year plan for equipment maintenance. That includes things like boilers, rooftop units, or so on. But if something needed immediate repair, buildings and grounds would contract for that repair.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay. Number seven, superintendent's report.
Take it, Chair One Riley. Kayla, you're a senior, you want to go first?
Okay. So this Saturday, December 16th, Rachel's Challenge will be hosting their pancake breakfast from 8:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Stop by, and there's free food. Santa will be there, and it'll be a lot of fun. We have some exciting updates with our track and field team. Our Eagles 4x200 relay broke the EHS school record. Congratulations to Ryan, Zach, Evan, and Jaden for that accomplishment. We will all be competing on Friday and Saturday this weekend at Hill House for the Hill House Invitational. Girls' basketball has their first away game at Windsor High School today at 6:45 PM. Wrestling has their first meet at EHS tomorrow that will begin at 6:00 PM. Hockey has their first away game tomorrow versus Rocky Hill Co-op. Buzz Robotics has their kickoff on January 6th, where First Robotics reveals the robotics game. And on December 16th, Buzz Robotics is doing a robot demo during the Hartford Wolfpack game.
Thank you. And welcome, Alicia, as I'm permitted to call you Alicia, our alternate junior rep.
So, 11:00 AM on Wednesday, December 13th, teachers have been invited to take their classes outside onto Route 5 to watch the Reeds Across America motorcade. Parents and students can now access the marking period two progress reports. You can find information on accessing these in an email from the school. The Enfield High Jazz and Marching Band will have their winter concert Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:30 in the Enfield High auditorium. From the 18th to the 22nd of December, the Class of 2024 Student Council will be hosting a holiday spirit week leading up to our winter break. Monday is Holiday Sock Day, Tuesday is Crazy Hair Day, Wednesday is PJ Day, Thursday is Clash of the Carolers, and Friday is Crazy Sweater Day. And the Class of 2026 Student Council will be selling holiday candy grams for $2 during lunch waves from December 11th through December 19th.
Thank you. And as both of them stole some things I had to report, I'll just remind that Reeds Across America is tomorrow, and Closing Your Pack is the itinerary for this year's convoy that'll be going throughout town. And you're all welcome to attend this. The convoy will convene at 11:00 AM here tomorrow at Town Hall for reed laying ceremony, and all board members are welcome. I'll let you go. Bye, guys. Kayla mentioned Rachel's Challenge already, I'll skip that. This confirmation, I know we sent out a message to all board members about training with Attorney Tom Mooney that has been confirmed for the 21st at 5:00 PM, will hold it at Central Office. All EPS schools will dismiss early with lunch on Friday, December 22nd, and then all EPS schools will be closed for the week of December 25th through January 1st for our winter vacation. All students and staff will return happily on Tuesday, January 2nd. We wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy, healthy New Year. Lastly, both Maya Matthews from Enfield Loas and Fishes and Enfield Food Shelf Director Kathleen Souveny had attended a previous Board of Education meeting and discussed starting a winter break lunch program for our students while we are out. And Closing Your Pack is a flyer about the Lunch Link Winter Break for the 2023 that applies for all Enfield students. And that, oh, it's also up there, too. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Sorry. During this period, any resident or taxpayer of Enfield, employee of the board, or citizen with an interest in our school system may address the board on issues concerning the school. When addressing the board, a member of the audience will state their name and address, refrain from making personal attacks on individuals. And I'm going to give you four minutes, so we only have one. And Maureen Griffin, can you come up, please?
Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about something we've heard again and again about the demographics of our town changing, and council members speak of it, you guys speak about it. How can we try and reverse that? How can we make our school district more attractive to draw in the higher levels, higher income levels? And my thought was, well, we need to know who those people are. So I did some data mining, looking into stuff that comes out of the Census Bureau, and medium income levels in our town. The top medium income level of 109,377 is our black residents. Then Asian, then white, dropping down. Were you surprised by that? I was. I admit it. It surprised me. Why did it surprise me? Something I've learned over the years is, if something surprises me, ask why, especially when it's a data thing. Because why does it surprise you? And when you get an answer, ask why again. Why did it surprise me? Because it wasn't on my radar. I didn't think, wasn't in my thought process that it would be our black residents. Why was that? Well, here's a book. It's called Blind Spot. It's an excellent book. I'm about six years old, read it several years ago, and it talks about the biases we all have, and how the way our brains function, there's so much information coming in at every moment, and we're trying to make decisions, and your brain scaffolds things, and you just automatically, without any thought process, focus in. It's like we have these mental blinders on that we can't, that we don't even consider other options. And it shows itself in positive and negative ways. It helps us function in the world, but it also limits us. Like, why? Like, why the hell would I even be black people? If you know, black people are not a monolith, but many that I know highly value education, professionals. So they're going to be up there. So if we want to draw in the higher ends of the economics bubble, whatever you want to call it, what would do that? If we're looking at our black neighbors and other people. Well, it certainly is the reputation of our town. We want it to become a reputation of inclusion. We want it, especially our schools, to be known as ones that value diversity, ones that are willing to take a look at this and say, well, why don't I think of that? Why was that a surprise for me? Be very introspective. And the title of the book is Hidden Biases of Good People. It doesn't mean you're bad. It doesn't mean that I'm a horrible person because it didn't occur to me. It doesn't mean that you're a horrible person. But if we're not willing to look at it, we're not going to make progress, and we're certainly not going to draw in a varied staff, because if people don't see our town and our schools working to be more inclusive, more cognizant of where we fall short and where we have blind spots, they're not going to want to come here. So you want to build our school district up? Do the diversity work. Do the inclusion work. Do it. Don't be afraid of it. We are all in need of broadening our perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay. Does anybody else want to come up? No? Okay. So public communication is over. So now we are going to move on to board member comments. I'm going to mix it up, and we're going to start to my left with Mr. Ryder.
I appreciate that. So happy sixth night of Hanukkah to everyone celebrating this evening and throughout the week and a day. Just a quick update from Eli Whitney. On December 1st, last Friday, we held our winter special person dance at Enfield High. It's our second sister school event of the year, along with Hazardville Memorial. Just wanted to thank both PTOs, both Collection of Parents and Volunteers that were there. We had a great night. Also this week at Whitney, we celebrated Whitney Winter Fest. Families were invited to join us outside for a carol sing led by our chorus students, and the lighting of our holiday trees by our kid mayor, Gabby. Tomorrow, students and staff, as mentioned, will be heading outside, so this is actually for all schools. Make sure the kids are bundled up. It's going to be cold. It's great to watch the Wreaths Across America convoy come through our town, but make sure that the kids are dressed for it, especially our middle schoolers and high schoolers who are allergic to jackets. Please make sure that you are bundled up tomorrow because we're going to go outside and watch the convoy come through. Also, at Eli Whitney, there's some Holiday Spirit Days coming up that start this Friday. Check out the flyer that just went home, and also I'll post it on enfieldpto.com/whitney. And then our big, exciting news from Friday, as well as on Monday. So I visited every school in our district, all 11 buildings, both on Friday and then again on Monday, so I could collect our PJ Day money for Enfield Public Schools and Enfield PTO. We did have a goal this year. It was a lofty goal, modest in the respect that it was a little lower of a goal than the numbers last year. But I can say that as of yesterday, when I stopped by Hazardville Memorial School for their late monies, we actually surpassed our goal of $8,117 as a district, as a town, in coordination with our friends at Central Office and ETLA and our partners at Smith Busing. I want to thank everybody that contributed, both online or by sending in money with their students. I have the totals by building for cash. There's no way to determine through online donations where every single online donation came from, but I will be emailing this to the principals so they can share these numbers with their buildings. Also, at 9 o'clock tonight, there'll be a post on enfieldpto.com with this graphic that will show everybody. This way like that? Okay. So our total as a district, so for six years, we've done this as a district. Prior to that, JFK did it, Parkman did it, Hazardville did it individually, but as a district, we've done this together for six years. We are once again in the top five for the state for PJ Day with CCMC. We have passed our goal of $45,000 as a district in six years, which of course is an average of $7,500 per year. We were in the top 10 our first two years, working together as a team and as a town, and we've been in the top five ever since. So I just wanted to thank, first of all, the students of Enfield Public Schools, their families, as well as the staff who helped promote this. And I think it's a great thing that we do, and it's one of those things that recharges the batteries and makes some of the not-so-fun things a little bit easier to get through. But I want to thank everybody for their help on PJ Day. And next year's PJ Day will be Friday, December 13th, as it always, it is always the second Friday of the month here in the state of Connecticut. So thank you, everybody. To every family member and people watching, staff members who wanted to wish you happy holidays, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
I have nothing to say right now.
Just a few things this evening. I attended Career Day at Enfield High, and I'd like to send out a special thank you to Ms. Siniglio at Enfield High and the Career Center. I was in Ms. Mazon's class. Ms. Mazon, you are a rock star. You did amazing, keeping the kids engaged and finding something about my job that they would find interesting. So I appreciate that. I actually have the information on Wreaths Across America tomorrow, so they begin at Walmart at 10:00 a.m., and then they're going to be by the Crick School after that. At 10:20, they'll be around at Crandall, 10:28 Barnard, 10:33 Hazardville, 10:40 Eli Whitney, 10:45 JFK, 10:48 Parkman, 10:52 Still Early Learning. They will also pass by the Montessori, then Enfield Street School, then Enfield High at 11:00, 11:05 Alcorn, and 11:10 on the end for the Veterans Welcome and the wreath presentation at the Town Hall. So, and then this Saturday is also the wreath ceremony at noon at St. Patrick Cemetery, where you can place wreaths on the veterans' graves. If you haven't been to the wreaths ceremony on that Saturday, it's very poignant, and it's a very important event in Enfield. And for those that don't know what Wreaths Across America is, it is the trucks from Lewiston, Maine, that are coming down from Maine, go to Arlington Cemetery, and also on Saturday, they'll be placing the wreaths on graves in Arlington Cemetery, which, one of these years, I would like to go down to Arlington to do at that cemetery. So I just wanted to say that. Let's see. Also, everybody's talked about the torchlight parade, so we are good with that. I just have a couple things, I guess, through the chair to Mr. Dreszek, or just to kind of put out there. So on Friday, we had a bus accident outside of Enfield High, and I'm sure you remember Walter. You know, we talked for a long time about the traffic light, and when Walter actually was no longer on the board, I think Mr. Dreszek gave him a squishy traffic light. So I think we've always kind of talked as a board, you know, do we have to wait for an accident to happen? I mean, the traffic on Enfield High is just awful. And I know we have issues with the state trying to, they're saying that we can't get a traffic light because it's a state road. I know we've gone to EPD about having a police officer stationed there, but if I'm remembering correctly, it was almost the addition of a position to have somebody there. And it's approximately like, I can't imagine that getting the buses in and out of there is longer than 10 minutes in the morning and then in the afternoon. But it's a safety issue. It's also a safety issue because we have, we just don't have the buses and parents going in and out. We also have students going in and out. And then there's been, you know, complaints of people going by the bus lights, and there's been complaints of people going over curbs to avoid the buses. And I just don't know what we can do as a school district to support Enfield High, because we do have security, we do have SROs. So I feel as if there has to be a more cohesive working unit, because we've had an accident with students on the bus, and now we're having, unfortunately, I feel bad about what happened to that bus driver because she was devastated, and I feel like, rather than working collectively, we're not actually fixing the problem. So as a district, what can we do to support Enfield High? Are the SROs available to come out and help just direct traffic to get everyone safely out of there? And then you have walkers. So there's a lot of stuff going on, and we had an accident, and we've maybe not had accidents with school buses, but there have been accidents with students and accidents with parents. At what point do we just put our foot down and say, what are we doing here? There has to be something collective that we can do. I don't think it's fair what happened to the bus driver. That's a different story for a different time. But I just, we have to do better at Enfield High, and we have to figure out a way we can support Enfield High staff. I don't feel that this is 100% on them. I just feel like there's a lot of community efforts that could go into this, and we need to do better at Enfield High with our traffic. So, thank you.
Could I ask Tina a question? On the last board, did you guys ever consider, behind where the automotive area is, there's a gate? So having some buses go out that way, some up the hill, and some down the hill?
Yeah, so when we were redoing the school, we were using that street. I think it's an extension off of Bridge Street. But Mr. Dreszek, you can step into, the residents want that gate closed. There's a reason we cannot open that gate for that street to let the buses out.
Yeah, there was an issue prior to my time when that, the residents took issue with buses going in and out of that area. So that was, that the gate is to remain closed, and that's the way it's been operating ever since. I don't know if it's possible for that to change at this point, certainly a conversation that we can have, I can have with the town manager.
So are all the buses going up the hill and out?
Some down.
Some do go down?
Yes.
Okay.
Pick up and drop off in the back of the building, too.
It's just, there's just a lot of traffic because we have a lot of drivers.
There's also two schools down the driveway.
Yes, we have Eagle Academy and Enfield High. I just don't, are we going to wait for somebody to get hurt? That's my question. So the accidents have been minor, but whether it's a minor accident or not, I mean, the people involved in the accidents are shook up, whether they're adults or students or an adult. It's just, it's chaos, and there's something we have to do better as a town to help each other with this issue. The other thing I forgot to say to everyone is, please have a wonderful holiday. I hope you all get to unplug. All of us can unplug, spend some time with our families, and recharge for the New Year. So, thank you.
I just wanted to quickly mention that I had an opportunity to visit Parkman this week and attend their ROR Assembly. And I'm just so appreciative of Ms. Roman and Ms. Barnett for creating so many meaningful opportunities for student leadership throughout the school, both within the Assembly itself and then also without, you know, outside the Assembly time, just in the school, in the classrooms and hallways. And I just came away also with a great appreciation for their Golden Plunger Award. So I'm just glad that they take into account every area of the school. So, and I do want to just wish everyone, our staff, our students' families, just a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Perfect. First, I just wanted to ask through the chair to the superintendent, you mentioned the Lunch Link program. I tried to use the QR code, and I don't know if it's just my camera, my phone, but it was asking for a Microsoft sign-in, and I just wanted to make sure, is it for all students or is it for students who qualify for free or reduced lunch?
For any student who wishes to participate.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so with that question answered, I would like to start with a Happy Holidays. I say this intentionally to acknowledge that there are at least 15 world religious and cultural traditions, rituals, and holidays during this time of year. I believe that it's important to celebrate that diversity and highlight what I know of those traditions, that there's a baseline in all of them of appreciation, reflection, commitment, and connection. So happy holidays to everybody. I need to thank the PTOs of Enfield Street School and Parkman. They put together a beautiful holiday gathering on Saturday at Enfield High. It made me reminisce of my childhood. Awesome event. Thank you so much to our PTOs. Enfield Street School, there's a food shelf collection going on and Spirit Week next week. Parkman, I just found out that Grade III was on Channel 8 News Weather, so families in Grade III, check out Channel 8. Thank you, Riley's, for your donation towards our One Book Three Schools event. And there is a Snuggle Up and Read at Home event coming up on the 18th. Mr. Ryder, your success of PJ Day makes me incredibly excited, and I wonder maybe how we could piggyback on the success of a fundraiser like that, on how we might be able to support so many of the clubs, athletics programs that I know are doing fundraising. I heard like the culinary programs trying to raise funds. So I know there's so many needs that we can't always meet through our budgets, so I think some scheduled PJ Days, you know, might be a fun thing to do. So I do want to say publicly, I think it's important for me to make clear to everyone that I believe that there's plenty of room for collaborative work ahead. I already, just kind of behind the scenes, there's collaborative conversations happening. I think that we can all agree that we want to support improving our academic achievements of our students. Many of the questions that you raised, Peter, during the attendance data, I'm interested in to hear about as well. I believe that our work ahead in policy and curriculum should be focusing on those concerns. So I do have a couple comments that I do want to address publicly, and they're kind of in line, Ms. Griffin, with some of the comments you made. It's going to be coming our yearly duty of a board to approve our calendar. Dr. Kovar, sorry, yeah, Mr. Kovar, not Dr. Kovar. You got a new title! Mr. Kovar! You had mentioned last meeting regarding half-days. For the last two years, I have been talking a lot about an inclusive calendar that's driven by our staff and families' feedback. I know last year, a survey was done for families about conferences in particular that might have good feedback for us on how we design our calendar, or kind of when we decide to do breaks. I'd also be interested to think about our data, so attendance data for particular, like, my wonder is, is there a pattern of before holidays, breaks, things like that, where kids take off? So should we make those our planned PD days versus maybe other days? So I think, thinking about our calendar, really thinking about how we are engaging our staff and our families in maybe some curriculum, in calendar adjustments, and what are some mandates that we have regarding kind of when staff report, professional learning days we must take off, things like that. I was going to chime in earlier, but I wanted to make some of my own comments about what Tina had raised. I think it's really important for us to be honest about the consequences of our lack of action, especially when we know about a safety issue. So for years, Walter advocated for a light at Enfield High. I have been providing gentle reminders and considerations about traffic safety added around our schools, but clearly that hasn't been enough. I'm frustrated that it has to take a heightened approach. I'm frustrated that it had to take consequences that not only impact the bus safety, the accident, but also humans. When a beloved bus driver no longer has a job two weeks before Christmas, I can't help to feel impacted by that. So to you, Madam Chair, I'm asking that our Joint Security Committee immediately review the traffic concerns at EHS's arrival and dismissal. I ask that in this review, we also review the MOU that we have with Enfield PD. What is the role of those two assigned SROs? How is this different or, sorry, how is this different or also coincides with the role of our security officers in the building? Is it the purview of our Enfield Public Police Department SROs to enforce vehicles blowing past stop signs? Or the safety issues of getting onto Route 5? Is it in their purview to assist with traffic, sorry, stopping the traffic on Route 5 similar to what's being done at JFK? If not, how can we make that part of our agreement? We can't sit up here and wait for another accident or another one of our amazing drivers to face a very dire consequence. We have to do our part. I'd also just like to add, maybe as part of that joint security conversation, Route 5 is a disaster, and we have three school facilities on Route 5, and with varying signs and preventative measures. So Enfield Street School does not have even a school zone sign. There's a crosswalk sign, but I think that's for the crosswalk up by the church. It's not in front of the school. I think Alcorn does have a school safety sign and maybe a blinking light. No? Doesn't blink anymore. So there we go, a light- So there we go, a light that, no, a sign saying it's a school zone but doesn't blink. And I'm not exactly sure what the signage besides a turning lane into EHS is. So I think there's, we really need to make sure that we're stopping and evaluating the safety procedures. What are the role of the people that we have? There's a lot of SROs and EPD presence around our schools. I highly appreciate that. There's a role for them. I just think that we need some clarity and a clear system approach. So that's where I'll end my comments tonight.
Good evening, everyone. This is some exciting news from Prudence Crandall. It says, "When you walk into the front door of Crandall, the first thing you will see are three winter giving trees, one for each grade level there. The Crandall community, which includes students and families and staff, have donated winter hats, scarves, mittens, gloves and socks in all sizes for children and adults. The trees have been decorated with all of these winter items and all of the items will be donated to the Enfield community for those in need. All Crandall students and staff are participating in an event called the 12 Days Before Winter Vacation. The students are learning about many different winter holidays such as Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Las Posadas and of course, Christmas. The teachers have been reading books, providing activities and having discussions about various cultures and traditions that are celebrated. Crandall's Annual Literacy and Numeracy Night will take place on January 24th. During this event, families are encouraged to come in with their children to participate in reading and math activities. The families will visit various rooms in the building to partake in activities such as the Family Fireplace Reading Room, Math Game Room and the Read Aloud Room where staff members will share a book with the families. Also, a book swap will take place where all students and families can take books home to add to their home libraries. And the most important event coming is a hot chocolate bar for everyone to indulge in. And I would like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. Thank you."
First, with respect to Kite. Kite recently shared the findings of the Community Conversation Report on Equity with town and board leaders as well as the town's DEI committee. The owners of Enfield Produce and Deli discussed how their mural project served to give citizens from all walks of life a sense of belonging in the community by means of their participation in this initiative. At previous board meetings, we have discussed the immense value which the Parent Leadership Academy has demonstrated over the years. It is still not too late to apply for the next session. So please contact Melissa Griffith for more information. And the next Kite meeting will be held on January 3rd from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. With respect to Head Start, first, congratulations to Danielle Gerard, who won the State Education Resource Center 2023 Parental Involvement Award for exemplary dedication to her school and community. It was an award well deserved and I think you had something to do with that, didn't you? You nominated her, didn't you? Congratulations. Head Start remains fully enrolled at 102 children and the current unit of study is buildings starting with identification of a problem, an identification of a constraint, followed by development of a solution based on what the children have already learned and finally, a creation of a blueprint. And those blueprints are pretty fantastic. And finally, construction of their structure. The playlist for Reddy Rosie this month is building, which of course aligns with the current unit of study. The kids are now on Unit 3 of Second Step, which focuses on emotional management. With respect to special education, there are five students with developmental delay, seven with a speech or language impairment and six with autism. And regarding kindergarten entrance, 35 students will be entering kindergarten next September because they will already have turned five by that time. 67 kids will be returning to Head Start, but of these 67, the disposition of 16 students who will turn five between September 1st and December 31st is still unclear. And then finally, as of December 6th, 64 of 102 students received their flu shots and students who have not gotten their flu shots by January 2nd will not be allowed to return. Thank you.
Mr. Kovar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So try to be brief as well. Couple of themes I just want to reiterate that I had mentioned previously about, you know, our goals as a board moving forward with planning, policy and goals is just efficiency and responsiveness. Just to kind of put a picture on it, this binder is all our BOE policies. It's gonna take a while, but I think an end state is trimming that down a good chunk. One, to save paperwork and then two, obviously to streamline the process. It's probably unreasonable to have that many policies in that detail for a district of our size. Just kind of want to highlight, I had the privilege of attending the CAEB orientation last week. For those that's not familiar, it's the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed's. Gives a good foundational introduction into BOEs and kind of our roles and stuff like that. I do want to mention that I'm gonna be having a meet and greet with principal over at Barnard as the BOE liaison, so I can at least throw some comments in there coming up. And as other members have mentioned, we are coming to the end of the year. This will be our last meeting this year. So we are coming into the holiday season, so I just want to end with Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Phil, I wonder, I'm with you on the big binder of policies. I don't, I believe we're still an active member of CAEB. I don't know as a service through them. I think they used to do like audits and like give some recommendations. I don't know if that would be a possible service to see if there's a way that they could support. They do? Awesome. Thanks.
Everybody good? I can go now.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to put this out there real quick, just so people understand the goal of the accountability updates. The goal of this is not meant to say everything's horrible because it's not. A lot of really good things happen in our district. Or that X, Y and Z are bad or to place blame on anyone or anything. That's not what this is meant. It's simply, the goal of this is to put the info out and educate us and our whole community and take a critical look at how we all can collectively, parents, staff, kids, have a hand in our students' success. We're just gonna take, you know, an objective look at where we fell short of target, where we were, where we're at now and what are our target goals and what they need to be. So by taking this point-by-point approach, we're able to understand the 12 indicators and the factors that play into each one and ultimately we're illustrating what the plan is for each indicator and how to move ahead and if we can impact that particular indicator. So that way, even though we don't have to give the state a plan because they didn't give us any alliance money yet, we still have a proactive plan here in Enfield, with or without the state, for our success. And if we end up getting money from the state, great. Guess what? We'll be ready and willing with their request, with their requirements. But I just, you know, want to remind people, if we don't talk about our problem areas, we can't make valuable assessments or propose effective solutions and have awesome conversations and presentations like we had tonight. And if we don't do that, nothing changes. But I know it's not gonna happen overnight. But at least we have an understood direction in what we, in which way we need to go. My husband always says to me, fill your mind like this, one fire, one hose. But bit by bit, I think that we can make some measurable improvements and make a difference for our kids. So then I also wanted to add, going back to like Ray Peabody, I'm gonna give a shout out. One of our own Enfield students in our Boy Scout troop just finished his Eagle project and it is over at the food shelf. It is a standing like cabinet structure and has sliding doors and after hours, people can drop off things into the box and people who are out and about in town, if they need something, they can just go and grab it. So I want to say congratulations to Eric Quinn for his Eagle Scout project. I'm looking forward to Saturday's events. That should be fun. I'm excited to go to Hazardville Memorial next week to go to their holiday fun events over there. I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Okay. So, moving on to number 10, unfinished business. Discussion and action, if any, regarding Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Committee. Okay, so, hold on, let me get this out. Okay. So I need-
Madam Chair, do you need a motion to take it off the table?
I need a motion to put the Mental Health and Wellness Committee back onto the table.
So moved.
Second motion by Mr. Kovar, second by Ms. LeBlanc, and I need a show of hands. Back on the table. Okay. So I'm gonna read what Ms. Akri and Dr. Callen put together. I'm gonna put it out for a motion to approve it, but then we're gonna have discussion and then we can vote afterwards. Okay, so the charge of the Mental Health Committee is to identify and address mental health challenges involving students and staff and to provide the necessary intervention to address these concerns, either in-house or by means of an outside referral. The Mental Health Committee will consider the use of screening to identify children at risk of mental health problems. Identify opportunities for expansion of mental health services within the school system. Enhance mental health programs and initiatives already present in the school system. Explore opportunities for expansion of social services to address adverse social determinants of health, key contributors to mental health problems. To collaborate with community resources to address the mental health needs of our students. Investigate expansion of the school-based health center to increase access to care. Offer assistance and support to any member of the staff related to mental health concerns. And engage families and the community at large in ongoing conversations related to mental health care. So I'm gonna need a motion to approve the Mental Health and Wellness Committee as presented in the packet.
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. LeBlanc.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Cushman. And I'm gonna open for discussion, questions, comments. I would like to go first.
Anyone has any questions?
Yes.
I actually don't necessarily have a question, but seeing what we had just, what was presented to us, I think this is a great tie-in for the initiatives that both you, Ms. Akri and Dr. Callen are working on, to be involved in because of the, the way they're looking at the graduates, then on top of the chronic absenteeism.
Right.
So I think that this is a good tie-in and a good opportunity for you and I'm glad that you guys have gotten to where you have on this. I know it's been a long road and a lot of roadblocks and a lot of not being able to get information, so your persistence is important to the board and to the town. So I appreciate it.
Phil?
So, Madam Chair, I'll kind of come out, I guess, with my original opinion. As I was kind of talking about streamlining things in, in general, I think I'm against the idea of new committees. I think we need to streamline things. I think on our Item 12, we already have, I mean, this is on there, but there's already 10 committees. That being said, I think mental health and wellness are very important. I think we probably would be better guided just incorporating them into either policy or curriculum and/or both, rather than creating kind of another bureaucratic layer to the board. That being said, regardless of which way we end up deciding, I would propose an amendment just to clarify whether this is a standing committee, special committee, temporary committee or ad hoc committee in the original motion.
Okay. It is a special committee, Phil. A special committee, not the standing committee like the policy or the curriculum. So it's going to be a special advisory commission or committee.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I think just the motion doesn't designate that and then kind of go into membership and stuff like that for, is it a three-member, four-member? Again, I would propose clarifications to the original motion to be made.
Originally, Dr. Callen and I said it's, Dr. Callen and I on this committee, but we are welcome, you know, we are open to any other board member who would like to come to meetings, you know, once that's been established.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you're right. We should have, I wasn't really sure whether it was necessary in this document to indicate the status, the specific status, but we were assuming it would be a special, a special committee. And that being the case, I think, I might be mistaken about this, but I thought that for special committees, the membership could not exceed three people? Is that correct? Or-
There's actually not a number within your policy.
Okay.
There is not a number.
Okay. I was hoping that we could keep this committee kind of small in number because I think the fewer the members, I think as long as both parties are represented, but the fewer the number of people represented, I think the easier it will be to get things done. Each of us, Jean and I, can speak to our respective caucuses about what we feel should be in the purview of this, of this committee. Phil, I do feel that a special, that a committee specifically to mental health really is necessary because we are really, really in a mental health crisis and it's overwhelming, not only the school system, but it's overwhelming the, the medical system as well, the emergency rooms, especially Children's Hospital emergency rooms are absolutely overflowing and it's really necessary in view of this crisis that we have a, a special committee dedicated specifically to meet the mental health needs of our students.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
With this committee, is this a standing committee that you want to have? I know you're saying it's a special, a special committee, but will you be working with like guidance counselors and teachers and stuff like that?
Yes.
So what, what as, do we as laypeople have in expertise other than the doctor, say, for future school boards to have any knowledge about what we should or shouldn't be doing with these, these problems? I mean, most people that sit up here aren't experts-
Right.
-in this area.
So we're hoping to invite the police department who takes care of, you know, all the emergencies that Dr. Callen was mentioning and talking with counselor, like to me, the next step in this process is to talk to key people of what's going on with this, you know, with the mental health of our students. So talking first to principals and guidance counselors, what's going on? What are the needs? Maybe they can give us some ideas of what to focus on since we're just starting this. So we're just starting, you know, we're just looking to get a perspective of what's going on, what should we focus on first? And then invite people to the meetings that we feel will help us, guide us. Dr. Callen, if you want to add more?
I was just gonna say, I don't remember if you were on the board, Peter, when we had a committee that was formed. It was when Scott Copan was mayor and it was the Suicide Prevention Committee. And there was a very specific resolution that was adopted and there was pediatrician on it, there were police officers on it, I believe EMS, we had school staff on it. So we used to have a regular committee that was joined, joint with the town and the schools. And when Jean retired, that committee fell to the wayside. So there's really not been a strong partnership with the town and the board. You know, out of that Suicide Prevention Committee, that's what Rachel's challenge came out of. We had a lot of good things come out of that committee and then all of a sudden, there's no partnership there anymore. And the resolution was completely kind of just put in the recycle bin and everything was reformed without having active roles of the board. So it's a matter of kind of branching off on our own and trying to figure out, you know, the best way to move forward since we're not really in partnership with the town at this time.
Yeah, I think that's the part that bothers me the most. I know as a former teacher, we saw a problem with a kid, we went right to the guidance counselor or the VP and then there was a process where everything just fell into place. I wonder if we should be communicating with probably the, the guidance counselors as to, is there something that they feel we can do as opposed to infringing upon what they already do, you know?
Well, that's why we want to talk to key people first. Well, that's why we want to talk to key people first, you know, just to make sure we're not stepping on any toes, or, like you said, reinventing the wheel. We want to talk to key people to see what, what is needed, what, like you said, what can we do? There are also, we found out in the legislation that there are resources, you know, monetary resources. I had contacted Senator Kissel's office, so a lot of stuff is coming through there, too.
Amen.
That may be, you know, helpful for our community.
So I think what's helpful to maybe clarify is, one, it's a special committee, which we were not hoping to have a long-term, longstanding additional committee, and to your point, Peter, I think the hope is to really look at better partnership and collaboration, and hopefully be able to get to the point where there is that piece going on. I did want to note that I, I'm excited about what I heard you read. I am a little bit worried that it's very broad and maybe might be a lot to take off and start with, especially for a targeted approach of a committee. I had provided some feedback to Dr. Kalman and Jean, and it's funny because the feedback I provided is already incorporated in this bigger, more comprehensive charge that you've given, but I think to kind of the concerns that have been raised by multiple of us. I think the immediate first charge is really, A, reviewing our current data used to identify students' mental behavioral health concerns. There is stuff happening at the school already. We are, we've heard through the SEL presentation, we heard through the chronic absent presentation. So I think it's about evaluating, what data do we currently have through the school? Maybe what community data is available, and like, what do we know about the needs of our students and trends that we've seen in those needs? And then I think the next piece is then saying, what do we currently do about it? So what are our interventions and supports that we support as EPS, and what interventions and supports are available through our community partners, youth service bureaus, CHC, da-da-da? So then, I think there's that like, kind of final step of maybe some findings and recommendations that we then kind of have to make some decisions about more long-term work around this. I was under the impression that this committee was to help us kind of better understand what's our concern here, and how do we make decisions moving forward? So.
Yeah, and, that's exactly right. The reason, this is a very broad document, there are lots and lots of stuff, but the reason that we did it that way is, we, this is going to be a part of the policies, and we don't want to limit ourselves. If we find out, for example, gee, there's a need for screening with parental consent, there's a need for, but that wouldn't be, we can't do that because we don't have it in our document. So we wanted to, to be as inclusive as possible, and we recognize, Jean and I, that priorities have to be established, and you're right, priority number one needs to be, what are our needs and what do we have at the present time? That should be priority number one. But the other thing, and Peter, you're absolutely right, we have to have some conduit to, to, for example, counselors, and that's exactly what this committee permits. It permits us to open up doors to all sorts of people, principals, counselors, and, and outside resources as well. So, that's the primary value, and even pediatricians' offices, incidentally. I think this would be a nice way to make connections with the pediatrician community. Another opportunity that's going to be available to us, that I'm really looking forward to, is to open up connections with KITE, because KITE has just opened up, or just started, a, an early child, childhood mental health committee of their own, and so this would be a great way of us to work collaboratively with KITE to address the mental health needs of young children.
I, I think if we do anything, I think Jerry and Jean, maybe you should sit down with the department chairs for the guidance department, or guidance counselors as a group, maybe the psych evaluators, the principals of the school, to see if there is anything else they want us to do, as opposed to us trying to do things. I don't want to be like the state, throwing stuff down our throats. And then you also have the confidantier aspect of this whole thing that you've got to be very, very careful with, so.
Try it lightly.
Believe me, as a doctor, I'm well aware of the confidentiality issues.
I would just share that as board members, and I think kind of some urgency is, we are notified of 911 responses, and there's been quite a few protective custody, which I think is different than medical response, which I think links to this committee, and I think there is enough data that we, has been shared around attendance, around the SEL presentation that was done, around the discipline data that we get reports on, that demonstrate there is a need to look deeper and to do something. So I am fully supportive of getting next steps moving with this special committee.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, but you can go first, Phil, and go for it.
So I, I'll just say I'm willing to, I won't make the motion yet, so I don't open up that, but I would suggest that we make a motion, that we empower this as a temporary committee of two people, of Dr. Kalman and Jean, not to exceed one year, and then advance it that way.
Okay.
Making the motion?
I'd need a second, then we'd move into discussion on the motions. I don't want to, if there's no further discussion on the main motion, then I'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. So, with Phil's, I was wondering how many people you wanted, so, two, okay, and who would be you guys? And then, how often would you meet? Would it be once a month, would it be a couple of times a month, would it be once a week? What do you, you know, what do you foresee that being?
We talked about once a month.
That's pretty-
So far.
Okay. And then are you going to have, like, a staff member oversee the committee, kind of like how, you know, policy, we've got Andy Longy, and like, we have Michelle Middleton on curriculum?
Staff liaison.
A staff liaison, do you plan on having one of those?
Well, I would prefer that. I would really prefer to have somebody-
I'm assuming that, that staff liaison will open up the avenues to speak with-
Right.
-the different people that you would need to, you know?
I mean, if possible, I was, or we were gonna ask Mr. Longy.
Yeah, I certainly will, will do this with you. I think I can help organize and get you the folks that you need. Even if I can't make every meeting, I certainly will get you the people that you need, so I think that's the biggest priority you need.
Okay.
So, you, like, if you're gonna focus on elementary school issues, I can get you those people, and then if you want to shift to the second year, I can get you those folks.
Okay.
So that's not a problem at all. But you guys are on the right track. You need, in your motion, you need to say who's doing it. There doesn't have to be a timeframe, but there can be, and then you've already listed what the outcomes will be, so you're, you guys are right on the right track right now.
Thank you.
And then, how will you know when the committee's purpose will be fulfilled? Like, what's the indicator? What's your measure of success or completion? Do you plan on putting out a report when everybody's fixed?
You go to court before the horse.
Right, so, like, I mean, do you plan on giving, I mean, I know you'll give like committee reports, but will you have a measure of when this special, if we don't put a timeframe on it, or say we put a year or the term, do you have an endpoint of what your goal is?
In my mind, it was the end of the term. I didn't want to just do it in a year. It's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work getting things together, and we're new at this, and the process of, you know, getting it started with Andy's help, but I didn't plan on saying after a year it should be over. No, I think the needs are too great for that. That's my opinion.
My wonder is, at the end, if you think you, my guess is there would be some findings of like, what are our current needs, what did we, what data do we look at, what did we determine as some needs of our students, and what is our current structure of support? And then I think we then close out the committee and determine next steps. I don't know if that's reasonable, that's what I heard as like the first step.
Let the two venture forth and gather information, then come back and tell us what they need and what they plan on.
So, could I just jump in real quick?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, so, you really have to go by your policy. So, so the committee will dissolve when there's a majority vote by the board, and also Jean and Dr. Jerry would submit a written report at the end. So that's really how you're gonna end this. So you could put a time limit on when the final report will come in, but really, it's gonna be up to this board. So, my suggestion, it may more, make more sense that this committee is for your term. Who knows what the board's gonna look like in two years, but you have a term now to look at this, but that's just a suggestion. But a final report will need to be brought once, once the term would be over, and then really, it's up to the board when it's gonna be dissolved by majority vote. That's how it dissolves, is majority vote.
Can I just add too? I think Andy is the perfect liaison, because he will be able to direct them to current policies, and then you always know if there's stuff changing in the legislation, so you'd be able to get them that information, too. So I think that you are a great contact person for that. So yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so then, we would have to make a motion to amend the motion?
Yeah, so, I'll make Amendment One to your motion, clarifying that the Mental Health and Wellness Committee be established as a temporary committee comprised of Mrs. Akri, Dr. Kalman, and Mr. Longley as staff liaison for the duration of the 2023 to 2025 board term.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Kovar, second by Mr. Genitis. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Mr. Rider.
Mr. Kovar used the word temporary again, and I would ask that that be stricken from the motion, or the motion be re-entered without the word temporary.
Should just use it as a special advisory committee?
Yeah, we've already established that. Any of these can go away at any time with a majority vote, we don't-
I would just say we don't necessarily need an amendment, because the, our bylaw 9133 uses special committees last temporary committees in the same paragraph.
Right, but you didn't.
Fair.
All right, any, any other discussion? Okay, so do we have to re-admit?
We could do a show of hands for the amendment, and then we could go back to the main motion.
Okay, so a show of hands, see, this is why he's a parliamentarian, so a show of hands for the amendment of the, the who, and the special advisory, and the length. Show of hands, as-
In favor.
Presented by Mr. Kovar. All in favor? Raise your hand.
I'm not gonna, I'm sorry.
You confused? Okay. All right.
So, just to clarify, the amendment is to clarify that the establishment of this committee would be a special or temporary committee in accordance with bylaw 9133, comprised of the two members and the staff liaison for the board term for the 2023-2025.
So then, a show of hands to approve the amendment. All in favor, we've got nine, yeah, nine in favor, yeah. Okay, so then going back to the original-
To the main motion, yeah, we need either further discussion or roll call.
Do we, any further discussion on the main motion? To approve the committee? So the main motion would now be to approve, to approve the Mental Health and Wellness Special slash Temporary Advisory Committee, with members being Ms. Akri and Dr. Kalman for a Board of Ed term of this term. With, oh, with Mr. Longy as their liaison, yes. Okay, so, that we would-
So, do we need to make a motion and then vote, or just roll calling?
No, we just need a roll call. Okay, so Kathy, roll call vote. We got this.
Dr. Kalman?
Aye.
Mrs. Kusman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Kovar?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have a new committee. Good luck on your endeavors. All right. Okay, new business, we have none. Okay, so Board Committee Reports, number 12, Curriculum Committee, do you have an update yet?
No, next meeting is next Wednesday, the 20th.
Yes. Finance Budget-
Can I ask a question for her?
Yes.
When you do that, you're gonna have a committee meeting. Can you talk about the, the kids who are below grade level, as far as reading and writing and that, what's actually being done through the curriculum?
We can, but there's already an agenda, and it's about new changes, you know, to the curriculum in high school.
So our typical protocol was, we can add that as an item from the table, and it'll be on next month's agenda for curriculum.
Yeah, because it can't, we've already have an agenda for program changes at the high school for next Wednesday.
Okay, Finance Budget Committee.
So Finance and Budget Committee met on December 4th. Our next meeting will be January 8th, and we do have some items in Agenda Item 14 that I'll be reading in.
Okay. Policy Committee.
We met last week for a special meeting so that we would actually have some policies in hand to discuss next week at the Policy Committee Meeting, which is the 19th at 5:30.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Yep. The item from the table at the Policy Committee Meeting was for Policy 9325.2, which you had said, you know, you wanted to discuss within your caucus, so you were gonna give us time to discuss within our caucus. So it's, I just didn't know if there's specific parts of that policy we should be looking at, that you, your caucus is gonna be looking at, so that we know what to discuss ahead of time, ahead of the policy meeting? Like, is it certain, is it the policy as a whole, are there specific areas? Because there's some areas I don't know that we would actually be looking at, so I just didn't know if you had a more specific, like, items.
I don't have the policy right in front of me, but I know one of the topics was the order of the agenda, was something, the time, the ending time, and audiences. Those were specific, I don't know if there was anything else you thought of. I don't have that notebook with me.
Yeah, Mrs. Kusman, I know I shot you some recommendations, too. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them, so we could possibly add them to the committee agenda. If you needed anything more in detail, let me know, and I could type it up, and then we could possibly add it during the subcommittee.
You had more suggestions based on the order of the agenda, the ending time, and the audiences, was there?
Correct, yeah, there was a couple of policies, there was probably like, six, and I just recommended-
Additional policies.
That we could look at, and I would recommend changing these, so.
They were from the 9000s, because he wasn't able to be there at the meeting, there were some things-
So they weren't items from the table?
But we were gonna just bring them as items from the table at the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Thank you for clarifying for that.
Phil wasn't there, and I had the wrong date.
Well, no, I went, I was there, and Scott, and Janet, and Charlotte, so I wasn't sure. I know there was one item from the table, and I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna be on the same page in discussing the right things regarding this item from the table.
It's basically for ease of flow-
Correct.
-on the agenda and stuff.
Okay, ease of flow.
Yep.
Okay.
And just to clarify also, the items that Phil, Mr. Kovar will be bringing from, you know, from the items from the table, they are all from the 9000 series, that's kind of our focus right now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Leadership Committee. We met last week, we went over possible dates for our Board of Ed training, we went over some 9000 series with each other, and our duties as board members, we worked on, you know, what we're talking about, the agenda items, and our next meeting, it's not scheduled yet, but obviously it'll be sometime before our next Board of Ed meeting, and we'll coordinate that with leadership. Pre-K5 School Modernization Committee.
No update this evening.
Okay, and Joint Facilities Committee?
So there was a meeting the same night as our leadership meeting, but I don't, I don't know that, I didn't see, I finally got the invite, I don't know if they had even had the Board of Ed liaisons on there, and then I just got an email that the one for Thursday is canceled. I didn't even know there was one on Thursday, so, I'm sure, with the change in leadership, we'll, we'll work that out, but as of right now, I don't have an update.
Yes, because I did, also did not get an invite. I got the minutes, but I didn't get the invite, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so JFK Building Committee.
Their December meeting was canceled, they'll be meeting again after the 1st of the year.
Okay, Joint Security- Joint Security Committee.
This Friday at 9:30.
Madam Chair, if I could just add that the questions that I asked during my comments, please be addressed as potential items from the table.
I made a note.
Thank you.
Okay. Obviously, we just started the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Work Group, so there's your update. Enfield Culture and Arts.
I was not able to attend that meeting, because I went to the policy meeting.
Okay, so Item 13, Approval of Minutes. Special Board of Ed meeting minutes, November 21st, 2023. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Callen, and second by Mrs. LeBlanc. And can I have a show of hands to approve?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry.
I just proposed an amendment on the BOE meeting for the 21st. I gotta just double-check the paragraph where I saw. Paragraph six of those minutes starts off with Mr. LeBlanc, however, he wasn't a member at the time. I believe it's a typo that meant Mrs. LeBlanc, so I propose we amend the minutes to reflect that.
Yep, that way we can all see a clean copy.
Too easy.
Okay. Okay, so then we need a show of hands to approve.
As futurily amended.
As amended, okay. So that is eight in favor. Anyone against? Abstentions? One abstention. Okay. Can I, all right, so approval of minutes, regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, November 28th, 2023, and a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. LeBlanc, second by Ms. Pickett. Can I have a discussion?
The only point, and I don't know if it's worth amending or not, one of the audiences, I believe his name was Mr. Moore, I recall during the meeting, he didn't provide an address, but the minutes do reflect the street address, so I just, doesn't seem like an accurate transcript of the audience.
I think he just put.
But he's been to many meetings where he has given it, so I just want to pass waiting minutes and put it in for him, since he didn't want to properly do it. But I can strike that if you guys would like. It's your call.
Okay, so.
I wouldn't strike it. I wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Or he lives.
No, it makes sense, and I would just recommend it not being, because the minutes are a transcript of what happened during the meeting, and he never actually stated that street during the meeting, so I would see it as a erroneous record.
I totally disagree a bit that minutes are transcripts. It's actually notes and, like, summaries of our discussions. It's not word-for-word transcript of our meetings. Second, I think it's really about what a, and this might be more of a policy question, what are our policies around, A, why we even ask for address, which I think is verification of residency and in accordance with our policy. And if we have had a history of publicly sharing addresses in our minutes with people, and that is our policy, or that's the practice that we've been following, I'm in line with sharing what's in line with what we've historically done.
Okay, so I guess we would need to.
Yes, amend them.
Yeah. All right. Do you want to make a motion to amend them?
Yeah, that's fine. I would just make a motion then to amend, and let me just pull up the paragraph number. Amend paragraph eight of the minutes. Citizen Ryan Moore, and then where it says comma, Ryfield Drive, just remove that and just say, address not provided.
Okay, so motion is on the table to amend without the address. Is there a second?
Without the address.
Without the address.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, second by Mr. Genitis. Can we have a show of hands? Those in favor of the amendment, approving amendments? Approving the minutes with the amendment? Show of hands in favor. One, two, three, four, five in favor?
Five in favor, so we can amend them.
And then, do we need to record? And then? Okay, so, okay, so motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes for November 28th, 2023, as amended. I need a motion, right?
Motion's already made.
Motion's already made, okay, so.
Unless there's further discussion or backup.
Is there further discussion? Okay, so then I need hands, those in favor of the approval of the minutes. One, two, three, four, five in favor. Six in favor, and then against?
Yeah, five, Jerry.
And Jerry, yep. And then, and then the note against is?
No, sorry.
Three, three against, and no abstentions. Okay. Item number 14, Approval of Counts and Payroll.
All right, a couple of items, Madam Chair. So the Finance Committee met on December 4th, reviewed financial statements for the month of October year-to-date, and examined various documents related to finance. Our review concluded that there was nothing significant to report to the board. I therefore move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, I hereby certify that in the month of October, total expenditures amount to $8,190,854.12, broken down between payroll totaling $5,64,101.15, and other accounts All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented, certified by Lorena Siznos, Business Manager.
All right, motion made by Mr. Culver, second by Ms. Pickett. A show of hands, those in favor? Nine in favor, none against?
All right, second item, Madam Chair.
The Finance Committee met on December 4th, 2023, to review financial statements for the month of November year-to-date, and examined various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there was nothing significant to report to the board. Motion therefore, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Begin quote, I hereby certify in the month of November, total expenditures amount to $7,796,077, broken down between payroll totaling $5,179,057.35, and other accounts totaling All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented, end quote, certified by Lorena Siznos, Business Manager.
Motion made by Mr. Culver.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pickett. A show of hands, all those in favor? Nine in favor, none against? Okay, you have any line on transfers? Are you good?
I, no, we do not.
All right, so number 15.
That second one was November?
He did November.
We started with October.
One was for grants, and now you have to do the fiscal for November, the month of November. There's one for grants.
Do you happen to have extra copies of that? Because I'm using the iPad. All right, so we have the grant one, which is separate. All right, so Madam Chair, the Finance Committee met on December 4th, 2023, to review financial statements for grants during the month of November year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, I hereby certify that in the month of November, the total grant and head start expenditures amount to $770,586.38, broken down between payroll totaling $404,981.66, and other accounts totaling $365,604.72. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented, end quote, certified by Lorena Siznos, Business Manager.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Culver, second by Mrs. Pickett. Show of hands to approve. Nine in favor, none against. All right.
Do, are we, are we? Okay, so I believe we're missing the grants for October, then.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy, for helping us hold it all together.
All right, last item to read in. Finance Committee met on December 4th to review financial statements for grants during the month of October year-to-date, and examined various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion therefore, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, I hereby certify in the month of October, the total grant and head start expenditures amount to $473,418.17, broken down between payroll totaling $413,581.63, and other accounts totaling $59,836.54. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the book of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented, end quote, certified by Lorena Siznos, Business Manager.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Culver, second by Ms. Pickett. Show of hands, to approve. Nine in favor, none against? Okay, Item 15, Correspondence and Communications.
Just one, you had mentioned this in your comments, but Hazard Memorial School has invited all of us on Wednesday, December 20th. Just reach out to the school, but they're doing a Deck the Halls Day at HMS, and they said that it's an all-day event. If we wanted to stop by at any time on Wednesday, the 20th, we are welcome to. And then just a point of clarification on tomorrow's Reith convoy. Obviously, there'll be a lot of police presence and the fire trucks and the ambulances, you know, going by all the schools. Just want to, again, reiterate to parents that it is a planned event, that there's no issues going on at the schools, and that is a celebratory thing, and not to worry if they do hear a lot of police activity going through their neighborhoods. That's all.
All right. Number 16, Mr. Dreszek, do we have need for executive session? No, okay. I got this one this time. Number 17, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett, second by Mr. Culver. Show of hands to approve. Nine in favor, none against. Thank you, have a good night, and happy holidays.